You have to call them.
Yeah.
I have, but I think I know what it says. It's probably good. Yeah, I'm gonna miss him.
You may have to do it when you're ready.
All right, very good. Well, welcome everybody. This is going to be the public required public hearing on the Carons County 2014-15 fiscal year budget, I'm not budget, probably tax rate. And this will be for the 2014 tax rate. We're going to, and this meeting convenes at 4:30 PM. We're going to, because of the number of people that have come, we're gonna have to move across the halls courtroom. I have to officially convene the meeting here. We'll recess and move across the hall before we have more capacity. Okay? Let's open with prayer and please beliefs. Lord, we ask you for your guidance in trying to make the correct decisions for this county and for future our county. Help us to listen as well as speak and hear all voices and try to come to a reasonable consensus decision. In your name we pray. Amen.
Good gracious, in thy light, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and limited to your justice overall.
I need to make a roll call. Commissioner Yeller?
Here.
Commissioner Rosales?
Here.
Commissioner Dupe?
Here.
And Commissioner Shiddell?
Here.
I'm County Judge Richard Butler. We're all present because we do have a forum. We are here on the Agenda 5, 6, pardon me, Agenda Item 6, which is the first public hearing on a proposed county ad more property tax rate of 30 cents per $100 for taxable valuation and is required by section 26 of the Texas Property Tax Code. Pardon me. In view of the number of people that would like to attend, we're overcrowded in this room and what we'll do at this point in time is recess and go across the hall and reconvene in the larger courtroom. Is that all right, both commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a...
I motion to recess until the Mr. Cogan.
Okay. All better?
Aye.
Let's go. This is the public hearing on the 2014 tax rate proposal that's been made by the Carons County Commissioners. As the Carons County Judge, I'm charged with the responsibility of serving as the Chief Budget Officer of the county. In the time that I've been honored to serve as your county judge, I've spent a lot of time trying to understand the Texas Property Tax Code and how things work and what is in store for this county in the way of taxation and in the way of budget. It's been an eye-opening experience and I've had, I've made, I've consulted with other county judges to try to get their experience and their expertise and what they've experienced to assist me in trying to make the right decision for your county. Chief among my advisors has probably been Judge Darrell Fowler of Dewitt County. Judge Fowler came to that bench, I guess he won the 2010 election and has been serving in Dewitt County since that time. He had previously served as the president of the Dewitt County Taxpayers Association and was a guy I put a lot of stock in. I thought he really had done a good job for Dewitt County. Consulting with him, the first thing he told me was that he thought we were on an unsustainable course with our tax rates. That Carons County was going to be in some serious trouble at some point in the future if we continued to let our tax rates slide the way that they've been sliding as a result of legislation that was passed by the Texas Legislature several years ago. I'll try to explain this. I've got a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation. I've tried to, I'll try to graphically and verbally explain some things to you about how we reached the 30 cent tax rate that we did and what it means, what difference there is between prior tax rates in Carons County, what it means, where the money will come from. And so, we're gonna discuss all those things. The commissioners may have some comments they want to make immediately and then certainly all of you will be given the opportunity to speak and be heard about any comments that you have regarding this tax rate. Now, well, I'll tell you from the outset that the tax rate is a product of the budget. I don't know how things have been done previously, but what I did was I tried to put together a budget that meets the needs of the county. That, you know, this county is not, as you know, the same place it was a mere four years ago. I moved down here again in 2010 to stay and I told my wife when I moved out here and said, you know, the nice thing about the place, it's nice and rural and pretty and nice and it's always gonna stay that way. So, this place will never be developed. And how wrong I was and how short of time it took for me to realize how wrong I was. We'll never be able to go back there, folks. You know, I'd like, in a lot of ways, I'd like to be able to go back to the Carons County old where I could ride down that 599 on a perfectly smooth road and not dodge any trucks and things like that, but that's not gonna happen. No matter how much I wish that it could, it's never gonna be that way again. So, let's talk about how we handle the future of Carons County and how do we make it the kind of place that our kids are gonna want to stay, our grandkids will want to stay, and we can really have a community, a county to be proud of. The Carons County tax rates, I'm gonna show you a chart that shows you the county tax rates tracked over the last few years. I use 2008 as a starting point because that's really, you know, about the time that saw the big mineral explosion that took place in the Carons County. As you can see, the tax rate in 2008 was .684, 68.4 cents, I guess, per $100 valuation. 2009, it slid down to 61.93. 2010 to 50 cents. 2011 to 42.69 cents. 2012 to 29 cents. 2013 to 18 cents. And our proposed for 2014 is 30 cents. How did this happen? Why did the tax rates slide so dramatically to this level, to this level in 2013? What we're gonna find is, the way this happened is because of the Texas Property Tax Law. Now, this is a very simplified version. This statute is quite convoluted and complex, but I'm gonna give you some of the, the kind of overview of what the tax law does. What was happening in the state of Texas in a lot of counties and a lot of communities was they would have a tax rate set at X, you know, whatever, 50 cents, whatever. And they were constantly going in to revalue the properties and raising the appraised values on these properties. And this was happening in a lot of counties for the needs that the county weren't really changing. You know, there weren't any big developments, there's nothing really happening in the county to change the need for taxation or income, I guess. So, what the Texas Property Tax Law did basically is said that, well, if you have a property value increase, it's gonna cause your tax rates to go down so that your revenue, your tax revenue stays the same. That's the overall objective of the statute. Now, there are some exceptions to that. They made some exclusions and exceptions to it, but here's basically what you would have. You'd have your property values, if they went up, you would have a corresponding decrease in the property tax rates and the objective was to produce the same amount of tax revenue. One of the major exceptions to that, when they would make these calculations, is what they keep called new property and that's basically either a new piece of personal property that's taxed or improvements to real property. What built a house, a factory or something like that on a piece of property, that would not be counted as an increase in property value for the purpose of calculating the tax rate. As a result, you know, and the theory behind that was that these new properties cause increased need for county services and more strain on infrastructure. And it's not just counties, it's also communities. You'd have more kids moving into your school district, so your school districts have more needs. You'd have more people, you'd need more law enforcement people out there, you'd have more use of your roads. You had all kinds of needs that would happen that were reflected by these new properties. Now, one of the things that the legislature did not provide far that's caused a real problem for local counties like Carons County is this. New mineral production is not treated as new property. So, it does result in driving down tax rates. The theory behind that was that, well, I assume, the mineral production doesn't really lead to new needs in the county. It doesn't really cause there to be any additional need for county services. It doesn't strain your roads, it doesn't strain your infrastructure. I think Carons County is a classic example of how the legislature missed the boat on this particular statute. We all can see how much more need for things in the county there is now because of these additional producing minerals. We have much more traffic on our roads, we have much more weight than putting on our county roads and beating them up. I don't think I have to give many of you an example of that, but it is happening to a great degree. We've had an increase in crime in the county just due to the number of people. You can look at, you know, Carons County's number of residents probably has not risen very dramatically in the last few years. Most of them, the people who are working here are staying in RV parks, in man camps, places like that scattered around this county. So, we have a lot more people to deal with, a lot more crime being committed and a lot more strain on the infrastructure. You can come into this, this annex that serves as the house for our county clerk's office any day and there are landmines just strewn up and down the hallways, out there and cardboard tables we got set up out there for them and they're checking the records and they're causing a lot more demand on services in the county clerk's office. And I think this goes across the board. The JP's offices are flooded with tickets that are being written that they have to process and they have to track. So, we have a lot more needs that are created by oil and gas revenue and oil and gas production that's nonetheless caused the tax rates to go down as if it didn't cause any new needs. Now, a couple of words that come out of the tax code that you basically need to know is one of them is called the effective rate. Some of you have seen in the notices that have been sent out that the effective rate for 2014 is X, whatever it is. And the rollback rate is another number. Basically, the effective rate is the tax rate basically that will produce the same tax revenue as last year. That's overall what it attempts to do. The rollback rate is the tax rate that will produce basically 8% more tax revenue than last year. And we'll get into effective rate and rollback rate, but basically rollback rate is if the tax rate is set by the county. If the county adopts a rate higher than the rollback rate, the citizens can sign petitions and call for a rollback election. The county then has to hold an election where the voters get to come and decide if they want to roll back the taxes or if they want to leave them as they are. I will tell you that 8% more tax revenue than last year or the rollback rate will not, will not produce enough revenue to operate this county in the way that you want. That this is gonna give you the roads you want, it's gonna give you the services you want, the law protection you want, it's not gonna give you that. I want to give you a comparison of the tax rates of Carons County in 2013 to all your neighboring counties to give you an idea of how unrealistic our tax rate is. These are counties that are not only your neighbors, but several of them are also fellow Eagle Ford counties. Dewitt, Leibl, Addis Coast, and they've experienced the same kind of Eagle Ford explosion. Probably the most similar would be Dewitt County. Dewitt County, as you can see, their tax rate in 2013 was 46, almost 47 cents as compared to Carons County's 18.7 cents. No reason for that much divergence. Beeb County, Wilson County, Leibl County, all well over our rate. Addis Coast County, well over the rate set for Carons County. How? 2014 rate comparison. This is everybody's proposed rate. Wilson County is now 47.38. Dewitt, 46, almost 47 cents, they're staying the same. And on down the line, the lowest one is Addis Coast County at 36.32 cents. And there's Carons County with our proposed rate being quite a bit lower, more than six cents lower than our nearest, the nearest comparison, which would be Addis Coast County. Once again, these are not pie in the sky numbers, these are not rates that are excessive. Give you an idea of about, about, I'm not sure I calculated these exactly correct, but I think so. Carons County tax payable on a $100,000 home at the rates that we've had in effect. In 2008, not that long ago, you and me and everybody else from Carons County that had a house worth $100,000 would pay $684 of total county tax rate on that $100,000 home. 2009, it dropped, dropped again in 2010, 11, 12, and you can see it dropped all the way down to $187. Now, for 2014, what we're proposing is basically a restoration of that rate to almost exactly what it was in 2012. One year ago, your tax rate was $294 for $100 valuation, or $294 for $100,000 house and $300 today. So, for $6 more than which paid in 2012. Now, where does the tax income come from? Now, this has been, this is a real eye-opener here. I had no idea about this until I studied these figures. 2008, this is the appraised values. These are the property appraised values in these various years. Back in 2008, as you can see, 56% of the appraised property value in Carons County was houses, land, ranches, things like that. That was the value. At that point in time, 28% was mineral values. And then this mineral figure is industrial values, industrial and others. In 2011, I skipped a couple of years to make this chart a little simpler, you can see a great change has taken place. This number for the land, you know, the houses, land, ranches, things, it dropped all the way to only 31% of the appraised value of this county, whereas the minerals had risen to 47%. Now, I want you to take a look at 2014. Now, 4% of the appraised value of this county is land, houses, things of that nature. 84% is the mineral value. Another way to look at it is on a pie chart. Here's 2008 and here's 2014, a more dramatic shift, it's hard to imagine. Now, what that means to me is basically this, that back in 2008, when you were paying a much higher rate on your taxes, it was the landowners, you, me, all of us out here that paid that tax rate, and we paid it in order for this county to be able to operate. In 2014, we're asking for a rate that is less than half of what it was in 2008 and the lion's share of that taxation will be paid by mineral interests. That 84% interest, I don't have the exact breakdown, for the second hearing I will. Most of that, probably around 80% in Carons County. I think most oil and gas leases in Carons County got made at about a fifth royalty, about 20%. The late leases that we made were done at 25%. And there's also some old leases that were 3/16ths, 6th, or even an 8th, some of those old leases. But if you took an average in Carons County, I think you'd find that most of the leases are at 80%. So, the mineral interest makes up roughly 80% of this 84% of our, that's the working interest. The oil and gas companies would be paying roughly 80% of this 84%. Out of the remaining 20% of that 84%, a large portion of that is paid by out of county royalty interest owners. Carons County is fortunate that a lot of the landowners here in the county did retain and still do own their royalty interest. And those people would be among the people in that 84%. But a large number, a large percentage of our royalties are owned by out of county people who don't live here, don't work here, don't have any particular interest here other than getting their check from royalty. Now, having said all this, I guess what I'm asking us to do is to consider investing in our county. We have said, the one thing I had some issue with, I thought Joe did an excellent job on his article last week, I didn't like his headline. The headline basically indicated that the tax rate or the budget was set to restore the tax rate. That's not correct. The budget was set to meet the needs of the county. The tax rate is set to pay for that budget. That's how we did it. I'm not sure how things have been done in the past, but of course, what I tried to do was to set a budget that would meet the needs of this county and then set a tax rate that would pay for that budget. The budget drives, since the budget drives the tax rate, the real discussion we have to have, and I think, and we have a budget hearing coming up on the 22nd, is a discussion of that budget. I invite all of you to get it, it's a proposed budget, it's not approved, there are things in there that I've had a lot of people call into question. I tried to set it up realistically, I tried to, you know, pay our people in this county that are working here a living wage so we can keep and attract good people to work in these county jobs. I couldn't think of any reason why the biggest oil producing county in the state of Texas should pay bottom level wages to its workers. That, it just to me is a source of embarrassment that we were paying so many people in this county what we did. Now, it's up to the people who you elect and it's up to the supervisors of these people to make sure that county workers earn their pay. I absolutely believe that's true. The people ought to do a good day's work for a good day's pay and that's exactly how it should be. But I don't think we're on a sustainable course. We set our salaries so low that we can only attract the bottom of the barrel. In days past, in Carons County, there were no alternative jobs available for a lot of people. The government jobs is about all there was. Well, folks, those days are gone. If somebody wants to work, they can get a job making off good money in the long gas field these days. And so, we can't compete salary for salary with those people and the county jobs do offer certain things that private industry jobs don't. But I do think we need to pay them a fair salary and offer a high enough salary to be able to attract and keep good people when we want to do that. You'll notice when we get to the budget that the lion's share of the money, the tax increase money goes into county roads. And that is, I suppose you'd say, our most immediate need. I haven't had a Commissioners Court meeting that I can remember where that hasn't been a topic of discussion, where people haven't come in and said, please stop the dust or my road when it rains, it gets undrived, or things like that that ring true to me. I live on a county road myself and I know we need to get those things fixed. And so, we're dedicating a great sum of money to getting that done. Now, I've had some concerns expressed to me by some concerned citizens about how that money will be spent that gets allocated with the County Road and Bridge Department. Absolutely valid concern. And I think the commissioners, it'll be up to the commissioners. Folks, I'm not gonna be here to help supervise the spending of this money. Y'all are gonna be electing a new county judge this coming year. And I think both the people that are running are qualified to do the good, good job in supervising the county's resources. But I think the Commissioners Court is going to have to focus very carefully on the expenditure among, of funds by the County Road and Bridge Department. They're gonna have to set policy, they're gonna have to set the ways in which that money is spent. And so, I think the commissioners are up to the task, but I think that's gonna be their challenge. They're gonna have to do that. They're gonna have to make sure that those funds, because we're investing millions of dollars in our road department this next year and we need to see that they're spent wisely and then we get the most bang for our buck out of those dollars. I thank you for your attention. Like I said, I've had my say, I know that some of you are gonna want to say some things as well and that's great. I appreciate everybody coming. This is a discussion, we're just kinda starting our discussion here, our public discussion about this tax rate, what it means, how it got set. And I'm hoping we'll get a lot of discourse on it tonight, but you talk to your friends about it, discuss it and invite them back for our second hearing. We'll have a combined budget and tax rate hearing next week on the 22nd, same time, same place. No, not same time, 9:00 AM, not, not 4:30 PM. We set this one at 4:30 to make sure that some people that might not be able to come in the morning will be able to come in the evening. And appreciate the turnout. And Commissioners, any of y'all have anything you'd like to say at this point or?
I believe Judge Butler's explained everything. Terry?
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, anyone who'd like to come up and make comments, feel free to come up, there's a microphone if your voice is not as loud as mine and you need this to be heard.
Do we know what the valuation was in 2008 compared to the valuation of this year?
It's considerably less. I don't have that number available to me.
That was the reason that the tax rate was so high because the valuation was lower than what it is today. Is that true?
That's correct. That's definitely correct.
I thought I understood it right. And where it was...
Yeah, remember, we showed that chart, there's property valuations rose, the tax rates driven down by the statute.
And our valuation today is 7.1 billion?
Does anybody have the exact number?
It's in the budget, I think it's seven...
The certified value is seven billion, seven twenty-two, four thirty-six.
That's right. That's certified value, which is what we have to base.
Which is allocated to the seators and then seven point one billion, I believe, for the general.
Right. So if anyone wants to come up, speak or speak from your seat, that's fine.
I'm actually fifteen, please. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who do not know me, I'm Darrell Blaski, and I served sixteen years as commissioner of precinct one. And all this time that while I was serving, we were at a high tax rate due to the low taxable values. And I can tell you, it was a struggle to keep the county afloat. Many times, I dreamed of a day when we could get some tax relief. Now we're at a position to have that relief, and what is happening? You are trying to double our taxes. If you figure that the raise in the values of the property and the eleven cents that want to go up on the taxes, that's going to almost double your taxes, okay? The oil business is not going away for a long time. I've talked to lots of people out here in the oil business, and they say twenty, thirty years. They're going to build a lot more infrastructure, they're going to drill a lot more wells, the value of the minerals is going to continue to go up, and the infrastructure value is going to go up, okay? So what, you know, what is the problem? If you vote for a ridiculous tax rate, we will get the rollback, circulate the rollback petition, and go for the rollback, okay? Now, you have almost thirty million dollars in carryover for this year alone. Let's use that money. Let's use that money. Why do you want to build up some more money? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Judge, I don't understand your presentation. You talked about going from an eighty point something percent rate to a thirty cent rate, which would result in an eight percent increase. How does that result, you know, when you're almost leveling the rate, how does it result in an eight percent increase?
I'm sure I can. It does not result in an eight percent increase. The rollback rate, in other words, the maximum rate we could set that would not trigger a rollback petition would result in an eight percent revenue increase. The rate I'm suggesting would increase the revenues considerably more than that.
Hey, could you tell us what the total county revenue was for each of those years? You have charged fifty thousand dollars, how much the total county revenue has increased each year?
I will bring that with me, but I don't have that number right with me, but I'll bring that to the second hearing. I will, I'll have that brought down. All right? I'll make one brief comment. How many of y'all out here get royalty checks? All right? How many of your royalty checks have held steady under wells? All right? The studies I've seen indicate that eighty percent of the production from any given well is realized in about the first year, okay? The chances that, you know, look, nobody hopes any more than I do, that they keep drilling out here. But if you're talking about the existing production, when those wells start to decline, as they all do rather rapidly, the value placed on those wells in each subsequent year also declines at about the same percentage. So the property values on the existing wells will fall. What, as it here suggests, if this thing's been going on for thirty years, well, I hope so. But if they can, the only way those taxable values will hold up at that level and will have this available revenue will be if they keep drilling more and more and more and more new wells. They've already drilled the wells to hold all this land by production. There's not going to be, there are very few leases that are getting ready to expire that haven't already been drilled with enough wells to hold them in effect by production. So what we're, what I understand Mr. Blaski to say is that it's going to continue, we're going to continue to add more and more new production, and these property values will rise. That's a pretty big bet to be making on your future. I don't think I'd want to make that bet. It might happen. I hope it doesn't, but it may not. And if it doesn't, we're going to be faced with plummeting values on these properties, and our tax rates are going to have to go up dramatically just to meet its current budget. I mean, not even this year's budget, last year's. And so that's a, if they do go up, if they go up, if they continue to go up, these taxable values under the statute will continue to drop, as we've seen what happened in DeWitt County. What they did is they raised their tax rate in two thousand and eleven above rollback rate. They were subject to a rollback petition. They could have had somebody like Mr. Blaski go around and get the people to sign up a rollback election petition and could have forced that county to have their rates plummet like they did here. But Judge Fowler got out in front of that community and told them about what was going on, what this tax rate was going to do to the future of the county, and the people decided not to go with the rollback. I'm hoping this county is going to do the same, they're going to have foresight and understanding of the tax law as well as the effect on the future of their county and want to reinvest money. And like I said, we're talking about rates still considerably lower than what we had in the past. Is it more money? Absolutely it's more money. There's going to be a lot more tax revenue, a large portion of which is going into fixing these county roads. Like I said, this is budget-driven. When we have these budget hearings, I want all of you to speak up about where you think the cut top we made. Where, do you want to cut back that road budget? Do you want to cut back on this project or that project? That's when we talk, that's what we talk. And we can talk about how low we can get that budget and see what kind of tax rate that produces. But to, to keep up with, and like I said, if we get more and more mineral production, you know what that means? More and more rigs, more and more frac tanks, more and more people using the roads, and it's going to cause even more strain on the infrastructure. I hope it happens. Hope you're right. Hope there's more and more, and our values keep going up. But I'm not willing to bet the future of this county on it. I don't think you should either. Thank you.
I really don't think that the roads have improved since we've had the unit road system. I think it was much better, or not even half as bad, when it wasn't this way. So why should we waste our money putting more into their budget when we're not getting the value out of it?
Well, I can respond in two ways, I guess. First of all, we were not under the unit system before oil and gas movement. So I'm, I would be unable to judge whether unit was better than, you know, done by the precincts versus the single, the unit system or not. I couldn't tell you.
And why do we have to spend seventy-eight thousand dollars an acre for a facility for the road and bridge? And we have four that are not being used.
It's not in my budget. I didn't, I didn't put that in the budget.
Okay. When you talk about the evaluation of all these wells dropping later on, at the same time that it's happening, the county can have a reduction in needed expenditures. Why don't you worry about that at the time?
A reduction in expenditures? What we're doing...
You're going to call it increase in expenditures, it is the increase in activity. When activity increases, your expenditure is going to increase.
They will. If our...
So if we have enough income now, why raise the tax rate at this time?
We don't have enough income to pay our county employees a decent, it's not high point, we're paying them just a regular wage, mid-point. We don't have enough money to do work on the roads that we need to do. If y'all don't want your roads fixed and don't want to invest in the infrastructure of the county, don't, that's the choice you're going to be making. You, let me speak, sir. You won't be paying for those, you know, you won't be investing money in the roads. You won't be investing money in having good people work here if you don't want to. And, you know, that's, that's your choice. But we're not trying to bring in tax revenue anticipating what's going to happen in the future. We're bringing in tax revenue to repair the roads that are damaged right now. And like I said, some of you have raised a good point, but are we doing it the best we can? The road budget is never, it's going to be many times more under this year's budget than it ever has been. Mr. Wozniak assures me that he's going to get out there and fix those roads, and it's going to do them in a good way that you'll all be happy with. And I think it's up to the commissioners to make sure that happens. We're, I'm asking you to invest a great deal of money in having these county roads fixed up. I really am.
I would like to express to you one guilt that county has now, in Goliath County, their tax rate is over sixty-nine point six-nine per hundred, almost seventy cents per hundred. And they did have a gas play about five or six wells years ago with Chesapeake, and as the appraisal values had gone down, the well production went down. They had to raise their tax rate to almost seventy cents per hundred just to sustain their county government and not grow it anymore. That's what happened in Goliath County. So that gives you an example. To answer your question with the unit system, I've been around for a long time, and I've been attending meetings for a long time. And unfortunately, as the people wanted the unit system passed because they wanted hope for their county roads, the commissioner's courts at the time did not choose to follow the laws and the statutes of the unit system. They did not put anybody in the unit system that was qualified. In fact, we had a former county commissioner as our administrator, and he was appointed, and he did not do the job properly. We're just now, hopefully, with Mr. Wozniak getting to a position with some guidance that we can maybe move forward and hopefully, the reason that unit system was put in, the people wanted it put in, was to try to put more money into the material in the roads and less on equipment and various things where we could maximize that.
I went to several commissioner's courts where they discussed the road and bridge, and every time the person that was in charge previously, that was a commissioner, that was appointed to the position, tried to get them to move on anything, they stonewalled him every step of the way. I mean, they would either not give him the funds, or they'd put it off and keep putting it off and keep putting it off.
Your commissioner's court, I'm sure, will take their obligation to see to that this budget is maximized, that it produces the most good roads for the most citizens as possible can be. But that's going to be their responsibility.
I put one, I'm sure you've doubts about that, because I know how they acted in the past.
Well, we know this. If you don't invest, if the money's not put in that budget, it will not get done.
That's right. But if you put it there and they still don't do it, then you're paying for nothing.
I'm through with paying my part of the taxes, but the money needs to be spent wisely. Spending money on a thirty mile an hour speed sign on a dirt road is throwing money out the window. And I've watched some of these guys that got the service trucks from the county. I went to Stripes, there they were at Stripes, talking with someone while I filled up with gas. Then I went down to Tractor Supply, and lo and behold, here they drive up, sit out there in the parking lot and talk for fifteen or twenty minutes. And then I went to Big B, and there they were again. I don't know how that, what they were doing or, but if that's the way our money's spent, that's crazy to up our tax rates when the money's thrown away. The county commissioners need to be on top of this thing. They're supposed to be representing the people of the county. And it's serious. It's ridiculous of what's going on. It's totally ridiculous.
I think Judge Butler's pushing to contract a lot of this road work out and moving away from building of the empire of the road and bridge department, buying new trucks and new trailers and all that, and putting that money into contracting it out where you pay a specific dollar to get a specific amount of road done.
That's correct. That's how I propose to address the situation. Now, the only way that your problem can be addressed, I'm not dismissing, is number one, for somebody to be more carefully and closely manage their people during their department, right? That's absolutely correct.
You go broke if you can't manage...
And any time you see somebody doing something like that, you ought to call your commissioner, or you can call me or my successor and tell them. And somebody's going to be answering the bat, okay?
A good boss knows most of the time what is important. A good boss knows.
I agree. I agree.
You shouldn't have to put talent there on them.
Accountability of everybody who works in this county is absolutely correct. They ought to be. And if you've seen, and like I said, the only way we can know is if you see that people are not working, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, you report it to one of us. You report it to their supervisor, Mr. Wozniak. Report it to him. If you feel like that's not going to get it done, report it to one of us.
Well, I can't see giving people like that the proper thing, but I can't.
Well, I can't, you know, I don't know who they were, I don't know what, you know, how many occasions that's accurate reflection of what they do. I don't know what the circumstances was. But, you know, I'm just telling you that all of the county people, all people who work for the county ought to be on their toes to make sure that people are doing their job. And any citizen of this county that sees someone that's not, tell us. You know, I guarantee it, I'm not out there looking for them. I can't see them all the time, and I can't do anything about that unless you tell me. All right? So, but I don't want to assume that nobody's going to be doing their job. You know, I don't want to assume that that's the case, and so I'm not going to spend any money on them because I assume they're not going to spend it wisely. You know, I, when we make this investment in the county, you absolutely are right that they ought to do the job, and they ought to be working like they're working for a private business and doing good work. Absolutely. Eric?
Judge Butler.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the road and bridge budget as proposed, your beginning fund balance for this year already is four point six million dollars. The legislature has dedicated, per the budget, seven point seven million additional funds in Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven. This is...
Part of it is ours.
That's right. Part of that is our match, and we're required by law to give, the Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven says that the county has to match twenty percent of that, of that from our own funds, or if we're an economically disadvantaged county, which we used to be, I don't know that we still are. So it's just ten, ten percent. So we're already seeing a dramatic increase in spending, almost double what we spent last year on our roads before we even increase the amount of spending that is being put forth by this rate increase. And I question whether or not we're going to be able to spend this big of an increase with the system that we have in place effectively in one year. You're not going to be able to, even if you set out to pave every road in this county, which is not what's being proposed, you wouldn't be able to spend that much money in the span of one year and spend it in a way that would effectively use those funds for roads and bridges in this county. The county commissioner's court, that's talking about the budget in roads, because I know everybody's concerned about the roads, and the... And, and the bulk of our road problems are not county roads in and of themselves. They're the state highways, your foreign to market roads, your state highway, one, US Highway one eighty-one and so on and so on, which are not even touched by any of the funds that are going to be raised by this dramatic rate increase. The only funds that will be impacted by, or the only roads that'll be impacted by these funds are your unpaved county roads. Uh, and I realize some of those are in, in horrible shape as well and-
Five hundred plus miles.
Yeah, we have, we have quite, quite a bit of miles of that. But let's take a look at the rate. Yeah, that's five hundred plus miles. Um, but let's took, take a look at the rate increase and the impact it will have on the taxpayers in this county. Um, the commissioners' court is proposing a tax rate for two thousand and fourteen that represents a seventy-six percent increase over this past year's effective tax rate. That's just in one year, a seventy-six percent increase. And a sixty-one percent increase over the actual two thousand and thirteen property tax rate for Karnes County. Um, I think you've characterized this as a restoration of the two thousand and twelve rate, uh, in the presentation. But I believe that's inaccurate. Uh, and I have a lot of respect for you, Judge, Judge Butler, uh, and, and the commissioners as well. The reason Article eight, Section twenty-one of the Texas Constitution, which is called the Truth in Taxation Clause, this, this section that voters across the state put into effect to prevent dramatic increases in rates plus valuation, requires the tax rate in a fast-growing county like ours to decrease, as it has over the past couple of years, is because the property tax rate is but one half of the calculation for the bill facing the taxpayers. When you write your check to the county every year, it's the tax rate times the value of, of your taxable, uh, value, whether it be land or homestead or even mineral, mineral valuation. Valuation increases such as that we've seen in Karnes County over the past few years, but for the type, the declining tax rate required by law would have dramatically increased the annual check that each taxpayer has to write to the county every year. A comparison to the neighboring counties is also inaccurate because they have not seen the dramatic increase in property values seen by Karnes County landowners. Karnes County is a unique county. We're, we are comparable to DeWitt, to Wilson and other counties, but we are not in the same league when it comes to the increase in valuation that this county has seen. In the span of the last four years, Karnes County has moved from the twenty-fifth poorest county in the state. That's why we had such a high tax rate because we had such a small value associated with that to the number one oil and gas producing county, not only in Texas, but in the nation over the last, uh, four years. In fact, as of the last census American Community Survey, we've moved up fifty spaces in the span of two years. Um, while the assertion's been made that oil and gas industry will bear the brunt of this increase, that's not entirely true. First, landowners and homeowners have seen a steady increase of their appraisals over the last five years. I'll use an example close to home in my own family. The home of my father and mother, which usually would be subject to the limits of sixty-five people, but wasn't because of some income tax and estate tax planning that we and many other people in this county are doing right now, has, uh, literally doubled in appraised value over the last five years from two hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars to four hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-two in two thousand and fourteen. This is what, with no material changes to a piece of property, a home that was built in nineteen eighty-seven and has no mineral rights associated to that, to that house. This tax rate increase, if this is representative of the increases other taxpayers are seeing in this county, will result in a doubling of the actual amount that you write that check to the county, uh, even though the rate itself is lower than in two thousand and nine. The comparison of the amount paid per a hundred thousand dollar value house in two thousand and nine to a hundred thousand dollar house in two thousand and fourteen is fundamentally flawed, uh, on its face because the hundred thousand dollar house in two thousand and eight is now a two hundred thousand dollar house. Secondly, landowners also pay a substantial part of the increase in mineral value valuation due to the increase in this rate. Since much of this value was not even on the rolls in two thousand and nine, the tax rate increase has the actual effect of doubling the amount paid by Karnes County landowners who have minerals on their property. Uh, the court should not forget that Karnes County landowners, not oil and gas producers, as you mentioned, are personally responsible for up to twenty-five percent of the increase due to this tax increase. Um, and also increases the production costs for oil and gas companies, which will cause landowners to suffer from slower development by oil and gas companies of their land as they struggle to cope with the doubling of the producers' seventy-five percent tax burden. The Texas Constitution, as you know, provides a remedy for taxpayers in a rollback election, which will be triggered by this increase. On the petition of seven hundred and eighty-five Karnes County voters, the county was forced to hold a rollback election at considerable additional cost to the county, which will likely result in a rollback to the rollback tax rate, which in and of itself is an eight percent increase in the amount that is charged to taxpayers over this past year's tax bills. By adopting that very reasonable eight percent rollback rate, point one nine two six one one per hundred dollars in valuation, it'll generate, in my opinion, sufficient revenue for the county and avoid the additional expense of a costly rollback election. And I think that once the taxpayers in Karnes County are informed about the increase in the actual check they'll write, which will happen about the same time that this petition process is allowed by law will happen because you're gonna start paying your bills, you're gonna get your bills from the county in October, November of this year and they'll be due by January of next year, then I think that the voters will overwhelmingly support a rollback to the eight percent increase versus the seventy-six percent increase, uh, in the span of one year. And so I urge judge and commissioners to adopt the more reasonable budget that will still allow for millions more to be spent on our county roads that will, uh, increase our taxes by eight percent versus seventy-six percent. Thank you.
I want to comment on his comments. Also, I wanted to comment on the fact that you left that out and a lot of your information was that the value of a home before, maybe it was fifty thousand with the land, is now a hundred thousand or was it two hundred thousand, now it's four hundred thousand. The values have skyrocketed in the last five years. So that puts a big burden on the homeowner.
Anybody whose properties are appraised at a value in excess of what the actual value is should protest that appraisal. If your property is praised at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it's not worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you have an absolute right and should appear and protest that appraisal. And, uh, if it's under appraised, then you've always been underpaid on it. You've always been underpaid on it. Uh, my experience with Karnes County appraisals is they're normally under appraised. Uh, their values are set at a, at a number lower than what it's actually checked, than it actually is. But, uh, you know, Eric, your comments are, are well taken as long as everybody's willing to let the roads go. They, they don't want to invest in the roads. If they want to have, you know, you talked about a dramatic tax increase. There've been a dramatic rate deduction, reduction, and I didn't hear anything about that. It almost dropped by a big percent. I'm sure-
Not when our appraisal values have gone down.
I'm done with that, the rate and tax rate.
It's not only affecting these people, it's affecting people that's not even part of the Eagle Ford. You take a lot of people, our local people have to rent houses. They rent others, okay? If, but the, the land, the owner of the houses, I've already heard several of them say, well, I'm just gonna have to raise rent. Good night, they've already raised rent from three hundred to a thousand dollars just because of the Eagle Ford. So, you know, it's even gonna affect the, the, the younger people in our counties here that, that don't own property. Uh, another person was a daycareer. They said, well, this is gonna increase my taxes drastically. We're gonna have to go up on daycare. I mean, it, it, it's a trickle-down effect. We're not, we're not disagreeing with the roads, getting the roads fixed and a tax increase, but this is a little outrageous, especially with the carryover that we do have.
The, uh, if the tax, if a rollback election is had and it's, it's held and it prevails, I believe the tax rate goes to the lower, the effective tax rate or the, uh, previous year's tax rate.
Am I correct?
The rollback rate, not the effective tax.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right. Well, that would be nineteen point eight and we'll just have to go back to the budget. We'll just have to cut the road budget down several million dollars. And, uh, people just have, if, if that's what the county wants to do, we're gonna have to see a tremendous reduction in the amount that we're willing to spend on county roads. And, uh, maybe it's your road that doesn't get repaired. Uh, who knows? But, you know, there's going to be a reduction in the amount of road repair we can do in many-
But Judge, it will still represent an eight percent increase in revenue from what we have right now. So why would we need to cut? Why would we need to cut what is spent right now? One, when we're getting seven million dollars from the state. And number two, and, and number two, when we're getting an actual eight percent increase over the budget that you have today.
I think your problem, you're, you're saying that what we're spending today, plus eight percent on the roads would be added, correct? That's what you're saying?
No, what I'm, what I'm saying-
You're satisfied with that?
They're also getting seven million dollars, which is almost-
Does anybody have a copy of the seventeen forty-seven application that Mr. Underbridge submitted? Because I usually carry it with me, I don't have it here this, this evening. But we did hire an engineer firm from Corpus Christi and he did submit a application that addressed twenty-five roads. The seven million dollars were addressed a very small number of miles of those roads. Very small number of miles of those roads. And, and that application actually, once been approved by Texas, cannot be changed, to my understanding. That seven million dollars has to be allocated to the application that they approve. And it is going to do a very small number of miles, very, very small. And if, no.
Eric, we're gonna get reality in favor of you.
That's correct. And the voters are also approving on the ballot this year, uh, an increase in spending for the other roads, for your FM roads, for your county, I'm sorry, for your state, US-
The legislature decides, or the next up people, with the guidance of the legislature and the governor, decides to spend some of that money down here. They have not been very good about doing that in the past. They've allocated that money where the votes are. They don't fix our highways and our roads. That's where their money's coming from, but they don't want to fix our roads and our highways. That's what's been going on.
I agree.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask how many people here live on, on the country roads. Do you like your roads?
I'm just fine.
You're doing fine? Mine's, mine's going away. I, I think their roads are going away. I've been across this county a lot in the last few months and the biggest complaint that I get is county roads and the sheriff's department. We don't get any, we don't get any law protection out in the country. Ninety percent or greater of the funds of the Eagle Ford Shale is provided by the people who live in the country. It's not provided by the people who live in Karn City or Kennedy or any of the communities. It's the landowners. They receive the least benefit of anything that's going on in the Eagle Ford Shale. They can't, when you ask somebody out in the country that I've talked to and they say, I just want a road so I can go to my mailbox. I just want to be able to get to the grocery store. They're not asking for a lot, they just want a road. And we can't provide it. I can tell you this, if we don't adopt this budget, we'll cut, we'll cut road and bridge. We're gonna cut the sheriff's department.
Are we going to cut the increase, the rate of increase or actual cut cost below what they were last year? What do you mean by cut?
If we, if we take the budget, if we don't approve this budget that is proposed, then when we have the budget hearing next week, we'll be spending probably several hours going line by line and we're gonna be cutting services to the people out and live out in the country and people that, that live in the county. Now, if you're, if you're good with that-
Look, I'm asking you a question, what do you mean by cut?
What I'm saying is reduce the amount, if you, the budget for road and bridge is twenty-three million dollars and change.
Could I ask?
Sorry, Joe. Say again.
Are you talking about cutting the rate of increase? Or are you talking about cutting below what we spent last year?
What I'm talking about is if we approve anything but the budget that is proposed right now, the one that the judge and the commissioners' court is proposing, and you go to a rollback rate or any other rate less than that, then next week during those meetings, we will discuss who we're gonna cut and how much. And, and you're gonna be cutting services to the people out in the county. It's just that simple.
My question remains, are you talking about cutting services to a lower budget than they were last year? Or are you talking about cutting services-
At least to the, at least the la, at least to last year's level. At least to that.
Okay, then it's not an actual cut. It's a reduction in the-
That's not true. Because the sheriff's department's had six additional deputies provided. We've gotten, we've got-
It's not cut from last year.
It will be cut from last year. Absolutely. Because you don't have the money to pay for it. You don't get anything, as much as, as much as I would like to, and I'm sure the judge and the commissioners' court would like to say, we can provide something for nothing. It don't work that way.
Unencumbered funds.
Thirty million dollars, but I believe if you talk to the treasurer, I believe, don't, don't we have, you're the treasurer. Don't you have to keep certain amount of funds on hand for operation?
Three months, three months operating money.
And you're gonna have thirty million in this budget carryover, unencumbered, if you figure it out.
And I asked the question a while ago, what is total revenue from the county? How has it changed since two thousand?
I can't answer that.
I know, nobody can answer it.
I don't think the Eagle Ford came into play until two thousand and ten. I don't think it, it was not in play in two thousand and eight. So how can we compare two thousand and eight to now?
All I'm saying is, I mean, if I were the judge, if, they're gonna do what you want them to do. But understand, the bottom line is, there're gonna be a cut to services. If you can deal with that, then that's what we do next week.
Well, how many new positions do we have in this new budget? We've got several new positions. Seventy-five thousand dollars, fifty-nine thousand dollar annual rate. We've got several new positions. We're adding, uh, you know, so-
Then that's what we'll do next week is talk about the budget. Right now, we gotta set the tax rate. And then next week, the budget, I mean, that, you know, that's gonna drive the budget.
Court, I'd like to ask a question. You said the budget drives the tax rate. Well, if you're gonna increase the budget and the tax rate because of the budget and the budget is that high, and I know y'all backed off from it, but from spending the kind of money that we're talking about to buy some land for the county road and bridge yards when we have land and it's an exorbitant price, if that's the way your budget's had it, it's no wonder why you gotta go up on the rate.
But that's not in the budget.
That's not in the budget.
But there's a lot of huge increases in the budget.
I took that out.
Well, they took that out only because people objected to it. If there would not been people at that commissioners' court, they would've gone through with it. And you know that to be a fact, Mr. Yardner.
That's right, and I objected to it.
Okay, yes, you did. But you know that they backed off of it because we as taxpayers thought it was ridiculous to pay seventy-eight thousand dollars in eight-
That's right, and I would like to ask everybody in this courtroom to attend commissioners' court on a regular basis.
You want to keep the work, Mr. Yardner?
I understand that. Then you come in to come to the commissioners' court and ask them to do it at night. You know, you don't have to just sit there and let them do what they want. If you're the, you're the customer.
We are?
Well, if you've got it, if you have a problem, all, if, if there's also incumbent upon us to provide a solution. Not just provide the problem. I think we have a responsibility as citizens, if we bring a, a problem to the commissioners' court, we also should also, we should also offer a solution or at least an option to try to resolve that problem, not just present the problem.
And I don't think county employees have it that hard. We matched their retirement now two to one instead of one to one. We're matching two to one. They get how many holidays? Fifteen?
I, I don't know.
They might work ten months out of a year.
One of the things Judge talked about is there's no money to give the employees a raise. We got a thirty billion carryover. Let's spend some of that money, give them a raise and make it an equitable raise.
Yeah, well, my, my thought would be that rainy day fund is where unencumbered funds ought to be used in, in that kind of manner. Or if we're gonna make some kind of big capital improvement that we might want to spend money on, but to simply give raises, things like that, we gotta pay as we go. That's invading your savings account and not investing anything. It's just, you know, doing things that you ought to be doing with your revenues, not, not with your rainy day funds. Uh, you know, I, I guess the problem I'm having with the arguments being made about this is I'm, I'm afraid, you know, like I said, we used to pay tax rates one year ago equal to what we- you know, like I said, we used to pay tax rates one year ago equal to what we're asking for now. And what you're doing is you're saying, "We're gonna give a rebate to the oil and gas industry." "We don't want them to pay the rates that we used to have to pay." They get to come in here and do it for free. They tear our roads up, they use all our structures, they cause law enforcement problems. All this stuff, we're gonna be fools and let them do it for free. We're gonna, we're gonna let them do it at a much lower tax rate than what we used to pay as good citizens of Karn County, to keep this place operating. And we've got a chance now to invest in this county, to go forward. And I'm hearing the same old taxpayer revolt language. We're not talking about a rate, a huge rate increase. We're talking about taking it back where it was one year ago. And everybody's acting like it's a big revolution. It's not. This is a realistic way to just, to address a problem we have right now. And what's gonna happen if we don't invest in our infrastructure now? In a few years, it's gonna be a sad thing to see. It may not even be in my generation. It may be your kids that have to suffer the consequences for this. And some people may not care, may not think that far forward. But I think you should be. And, you know, you're gonna have to say, I heard a lot of complaints by the county government employees, or this and that. They ought to be unlocked. They ought to be looked at by everybody and made sure that they do a good job. But to simply say, "Well, we're not gonna fund it because we expect you're gonna do a bad job," is a... I don't know, is that some kind of self-fulfilling prophecy? Where you prophesied you're not gonna do a good job there before they will? I'm not sure. I think we oughta expect, and we oughta try to motivate every county employee to do a good job. And be on their best behavior when they're doing that job. And if they're not, they'll be fired. That's the way I look at it. Yes, sir?
I just have a question.
Sure.
You might have been answered it earlier. Is there a way, like you said, the oilfield companies coming in, they're causing all the damage and we have to pay for it? I think that's what the main argument is. But is there a way to make them pay? Like, charge them, tax them?
This is what, we can't tax them unequally. If I could, I'd go send those guys a bill for 35 million dollars a year and say, "Pay for repairing these roads you were tearing up." But they're not gonna pay that, and they would protest that it's unconstitutional to tax them unequally. And it would be, we can't do it. I wish we had a representative of all these producers in here right now that would say, "Here's 35 million dollars, we'll allocate between that, all the producers here in this county, and we'll pay for these infrastructures that we're damaging. We'll pay for it. We're making a fortune off of it. But, you know, luckily for us, you guys, unlike every other county that we're operating in, won't tax us for it. So we'll be glad to, we'll go ahead and pay you the extra money that we're saving. And keep people, good people like you, from having to pay that tax. Unfortunately, they're not gonna do that. And so the only way to get them to pay their fair share, like the share we used to pay, and a lot less, is to raise the tax rate for everybody. Now, this raising of a tax rate is only to a level that it was in 2012.
It's a 75% increase.
And it was a 100% decrease a year here, right?
But it did reduce the income to the government.
Okay. But there are needs, do you agree that the needs of the county are greater than they were?
Absolutely.
Do you think eight percent take care of it? Is it only eight percent greater?
I don't know, but you told me a while ago that eight percent number wasn't what you were talking about.
Well, eight percent is the rollback amount. Number that Mr. Opiala proposed that we accept. We just raised the tax rate enough, they have an eight percent revenue increase, so eight percent covered it.
There's a lot of numbers between eight percent and 75%.
Okay. There are a lot of numbers, and that's what I'm asking everybody to do. Is come to the tax rate, I mean, come to the meeting on the budget, let's analyze it. Let's see what, what doesn't belong in there. And I'm willing to listen to anything. What doesn't belong in there? What shouldn't we, let's, let's keep our county the lowest paying county in the state of Texas. Let's do that, is this lady's suggestion. Or however you wanna handle it. But I think we're going to end up with a real bad situation in the future if we do that. Yes, sir?
Not some counties charge extra for, to all companies when they're drilling on county roads? I know I've read in the paper several times, other counties are doing it, and Karn County just neglected to do it. And you said you can't tax without representation. But if they're using the county roads, and there's rigs on those county roads, and wells being drilled, there are fees other counties are doing that we're not doing. Why not?
Dewitt County was doing that, and the amount of money they realized from it wasn't, was, you know, it wasn't nothing compared to the road reconstruction that'd be required. I don't even know if they're collecting it anymore. I know there were some protests by the oil and gas companies paying that. I don't know if they're still doing that or not. But like I said, if they would agree to pay the actual amount that it would cost to keep the road, or to restore the road to where it was before they got there, that'd be great if they want it.
If we went with an eight percent rollback election, how many more million dollars would that bring in Karn County from '14 than it did in '13? With our sales tax, all the county sales taxes and all the money the county collects? How many more million would it be if we went with rollback compared to last year?
I'll have that number for you when we, if you have an next question. I'll have that number for you. Yes, ma'am?
The only thing I'd like to say is, I have a friend who lives basically on a fixed income.
Yes, ma'am.
And she was telling me just the other day that if we raised the tax rate, she'd still have to sell her house and move out of the county.
How much of a house does she have?
Not much. But I'm talking about a check there all year to save the money to pay her taxes. And that there are people that are like that. And those are the people that I'm concerned about.
Those people, if they're senior citizens, they have a tax rate-
She's not a senior citizen.
There's a lot of working class people that are like that, that have the royalty, that are having to do paycheck to paycheck.
How did they make it to 2012?
Same way they tried to do that.
Their appraisal values were not as high as they were either.
Okay, so their appraisal values raised. If appraisal values raised unfairly, they should, they should prove it.
I'm telling you, everything has doubled in the last five years.
Okay.
Well, could I ask the commissioners, how many of the commissioners have actually talked to the people out here, and they have said, "Yes, we want this tax increase, this large tax increase"? And have y'all talked to anybody? Honestly, now tell me, how many said, "Let's go with this 30%"?
I've had about a dozen people that I've talked to, and I've also had about a dozen people that live in and out of Kenneb County and say that they do not want the increase. And some said they understood the increase.
Now, this place is not full of all the taxpayers. We elected y'all to represent us. And, I mean, we're not denying that the roads need to be fixed, and we have a tax increase, but not this kind of tax increase, especially when the appraisal values of the property have gone up. That's, it's just plain and simple.
Could you give a brief overview of what would happen if oil revenues went away today? What would happen based on the taxes that we're currently paying? And the situation we would find ourselves facing? Similar to what happened after the uranium in this county and the Austin Chalk?
The tax rates would go up dramatically, just to meet like current budget needs. Even if I didn't raise the budget at all over what it was last year. Same level of services, no increase to road spending, nothing. The rates would have to go up dramatically to just cover that budget. If, and this royalty money, the royalty money would not be here to pay for it. The oil companies would be gone, they wouldn't be paying anything. All of you would be stuck in the village. I'm sorry?
You can say it yourself, that's not worth having.
No, I, what I said is, I hope it doesn't happen. I don't know whether it will or it won't. Is it a conservative approach to gamble?
Judge Butler, you make a really good point here, and I, and I wanna, I wanna bring this up. If our property values decrease, and we increase the size of our budget, are we not causing the increase in the future to be even double what it otherwise would be? Because if we spend 10 million dollars to operate, and I'm just pulling this number to make it easy on math. Say we spend 10 million dollars right now to operate the county government, or 10 billion dollars to operate county government. If we increase that by 76%, you know, a little shy of doubling that to, say, 20, 30 million dollars, in order to maintain that same level of services that we now have grown the county government to do, when the property values decrease, are we not gonna have to raise our property tax rate even more in the future?
No.
Why is that?
Because you're assuming that we're gonna have to keep doing the road work that we're gonna have to do to repair what's been done now. If the oil and gas companies do pull out, or if they cease drilling at the level they have now, our need for road repairs is gonna drop. Our need for investment in infrastructure is gonna drop.
The taxpayers won't have the protection of a rollback election to force the commissioners' court in the future.
Oh, yes, they do.
Oh, but wait a second. I'm just, I don't mean to question this, but let's look at this. If we increase the budget, and we have to maintain the same level of spending, or we get a rollback election?
Why do we have to maintain the same level of spending? You're making an assumption, so it's true.
No, what I'm saying is, say the commissioners' court wants to build a new jail in the future. I know we did. Or say we want to build a new community center, or something to that effect, that isn't in the budget right now. The protection that is afforded by the rollback is only to maintain the same level of revenue plus eight percent. So, say we fix the road problem, and the commissioners' court wants to engage in projects that are maybe questionable in the future. And you can't, you're not gonna be county judge, I know that, and some of the members of commissioners' court will be here in the future. The taxpayers in the future have no protection from a, that we would have with a rollback election, because they will be maintaining the same level of spending, which is now 76% higher, or, in the future.
Because of the royalty and all the, for all the new Zell, you're having that people really got me. You're talking about how much is gonna be heightened, so you're gonna have less money.
Where's the payment?
So, you're, if the, if the level of activity drops, if the property, if the property values drop, you're gonna have to insist that the county commissioners drop their spending. If they don't need the new roads, if you don't need to, this will share with you. If these needs aren't there anymore, the commissioners' court's gonna have to reduce their spending.
But what if you have the hammer of a rollback election used in the future? Why do you have to have the hammer?
You have to have the hammer. Apparently, you don't trust commissioners' court. You think they're going to- I think we've got, we've got a lot of people here in this audience that feel like, they do not trust commissioners' court to make the wisest decisions.
I think Karn County has never trusted commissioners' court. I don't care how far back you want to go. The commissioners never have, as a whole, has never provided what they would, said what they could do to the citizens of Karn County. For years, even under the precinct system, the roads weren't no better. They never got better. And, and right now, there was a comment made a while ago about the unit system. I think what would've happened, Karn County probably would've been forced to go to the unit system due to the people going to work in the, in the oil industry. I don't know how many each commissioner had prior to the year's employees that they run now. Wasn't it, you got what, 15 people, 10 people? 10 people taking care of the whole county. Before, I think each precinct, each commissioner may have had, I don't know, five or six per department, per precinct. That was 24 employees plus. They had equipment they were barely scraping together to try to keep together. And try to make in work due to the time of the economic condition. Now, we're trying to position the county to a point where we're not, we don't want to go back to where we have to struggle. There's 20 million, 27 million dollars this year in the road. 7 million, Eric, is from the 1747. 10 million coming out of the Ters, which affects, that number could change upon the tax rate. And then, right now, the county is putting in 9 million from the coffers, or however you wanna say it, that, to make the 27 million. There's 4 million going into the sheriff's office, and also to fund the staffing for the jail, as well as provide public service. EMS is 1.3 million. And if we can build another building for EMS, that's another million. So that's about, I think, if you look at the budget, 27% of the budget, or maybe 30%, I don't know, it's only to that percentage number. That affects public safety and certain needs, like transportation in EMS and fire. I mean, and law. So, everything there has gone up considerably. Last year, we spent on capital outlay, we spent close to 13 million dollars on capital outlay. And a lot of it was to do with maintaining this building as other needs that we had. This building here, if in years past, if we would've created, if commissioners, of the court, whoever, whoever was on the court of town would've tried to maintain some public facilities, maybe we wouldn't have to have this building. But no, what happened? Everything, again, economic dictated that we do not take care, we couldn't afford to take care of what we needed to take care of. So now we have a courthouse that we're trying to get back into, and hoping we can get grants to do, to maintain. Yet we got this facility here, and this facility, quite frankly, is, well, it is what it is. And, and so, you know, I hear what everybody's saying, and I agree. Do I want to raise taxes? No. But do I want to invest in the future for this county somehow? Yes. I really do. I want to see if we can provide for this county some type of growth. Karn County has always been, and wherever you go, you know, we've always been a laughing stock of the state, basically. So, "Oh, you're from Karn County, oh, y'all are so backward thinking of stuff like that." Eric, you know, you've heard that in Austin. But we're here, we're trying to make a difference, it's trying to make things to go forward. There's a lot of things in this budget, yes, maybe we don't need. But we're in a position now that, that we can, we need to try to build, if we build it, this one year, we need to try to build to maintain enough to where we can have a little push going forward. Maybe the 30 cents is too much. I don't know. I don't have any oil revenue coming in, and my mother lives on a fixed income too. So, it's, it's, there's a lot there. I look around this county, and I see a lot of, a lot of people. I see people don't think twice about going and investing in Randalls County, buying houses in Rockport. They don't think about that. But yet, when we're trying to invest in a county where we live, where each school now is building a school, and the cities are priding themselves on having a low tax rate, but yet they'll raise, they'll raise the water rates. I worry about the water for the county right now, because we're gonna be an issue for water conservation sooner or later. But what we have in this budget, and I was proud of Judge Butler this year, and we wanted to for what they did to budget, because it was the first time it was a systematic way we did it. You didn't come in and say, "Well, I got, I'll kick it 10%." You had to have a justification why you wanted to raise what we wanted, what each department wanted to do. We had the sheriff's office, and again, all you ever heard was, "We have people that need to, we need to have law enforcement, law enforcement, law enforcement." God, years ago, law enforcement was six deputies in the whole county, now we're up to probably 30 people. It's not in our county, the new jail we're gonna open up, that's gonna require a lot more structure than what any other jail has been in the past. Road and bridge, we're looking at more and more, again, as Judge said, about, in my opinion, and what we need to do is contract more services and get them done. I agree with the thing Ricky said about, you know, you drive around, and I, and you see county employees sitting there talking all the time, maybe at the stop and shop or wherever. I get ahold of Robert Nim, Robert and Duane, says, "Y'all had a police reunion yesterday, 'cause it was like, every officer in the county was sitting in bars, having coffee together, or having dinner together." You know, I get concerned about that. Saw that this afternoon. But, you know, it's not that, do you want to raise taxes? No. Do you want these old, the companies to, you know, they're donating what they can, they do what they can to help the community as a whole. But my thing is this, investing in the future for Karn County- But, my, my thing is this, investing in the future for Cornish County is, is, is what we, what I feel we need to do. Thirty cents may not be the investment we need, but there's some things that we need to do to move this county forward, to catch up, so we can be in the twenty-first century. So, so we can sit there, you want people to move back to Cornish County, to, to help contribute back to the tax base and stuff. But you can't do that till we can get in a progressive mode. And, everybody here's made some good comments. I know Commissioner Blasky, when he was there, he struggled to do what he could do to get, to get, make things in main. So, the cotton bean, and Stormy Rosette, and whoever else was Commissioners at the time. But, we need, in my opinion, this is, this is a, an issue that, however way it goes, it's going to be a, a long, hard, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a scar on Cornish County, whichever way it goes. You know, nobody's ever going to really be happy, nobody's, some are going to be sad. But, again, services that we provide, we try to provide the best that we can, and we try to get, we're trying to move forward and be more progressive. And, that's, that's, that's my comments.
Bill?
Sure, it's like I said, you know, I don't mind paying my part with taxes, but.
I agree with you.
If you guys just look, think, class, and spend once before you.
And I agree.
Because that, that money will go a lot further if you, sometimes if you give it a, a little while and think about it.
Ricky, I, I.
And think about these people, you know, what's best for, you know, y'all were elected to, to do what's best for these people out here.
I agree.
Not just by what one or two think.
No. I, I agree with what you're saying, and I'm not arguing with you, but I'm just saying.
No, I'm not either.
But, but this is what I'm, what I'm looking at, just, just from my opinion.
Yeah, we're, we're interested.
I'd like to just build on something that actually Mr. Hall said in a Commissioners' Court meeting, or two ago, that actually, we can come to the, citizens can come here, and whatever the tax rate is, or will be, and whatever the budget will be, but it's up to you five people to make sure that it's done correctly with input from, from the citizens during Commissioners' Court. And unfortunately, there has not been, in my view, a hundred percent effort by every member of the Commissioners' Court. And, and, you know, the Commissioners are paid a salary, they know what that salary is when they run for the office, and they should put in a fair day's work for a fair day's pay. And, you know, if they don't, if they don't do that, then it's incumbent upon the citizens in this county to replace them.
Judge, but I appreciate this, you know, I appreciate the comments you made, but I, I'd like to hear some other comments, and maybe some of these other Commissioners that are sitting up here, what they would like to say about this. James, would you like to?
The gentleman over here asked if we had been approached. Well, I can let you know, every day I'm approached, every day I'm called about the taxes. No, nobody wants them, nobody wants them increased. I haven't heard anybody saying that they want to pay more money. I don't think that's our nature, human nature, you don't want to pay more money on anything, on taxes, on anything you buy. You want to try to get it the cheapest you can, or at least unless I'm making a mistake by that. So, yes, I'm approached every day, on the phone and everything, and nobody, nobody in agreement with raising taxes. I've tried to sit there, and I've tried to explain there, I've been here when the county was poor, and I've been, I've seen the growth of the county here since going fourteen, fifteen years now. And, I don't agree that we should raise all the taxes. I do agree that we have to have a tax base that's going to generate enough revenue to, you know, because we, we're growing, and we have a big growth, and we need more deputies, we need more, I know there's some positions in this proposal, and I'm sorry, I haven't looked at it one hundred percent, because there was something going on, and I didn't get to finish looking at, at the tax rate. I've been doing some homework on the tax rate, but, I'm sorry, Mr. Hall, I'm just, I'm trying to, you know, be as good as I can, but, I've been here for a long time and everything, and nobody wants to raise, the taxes raised, and I do understand what Judge Butler was saying, if your, if your taxes, if your taxes go, we go, taxes go down, the property value goes up, you're still going to pay the same amount. Right here, I do understand that if we go, like Judge Butler said, we go to point three, if it's a hundred thousand dollar house, there's another hundred thousand dollar house, yes, I understand that we're only going to pay X amount of dollars, but I understand what like Mr. Hahn was saying, too, that our, our property values, or the houses, have gone up two hundred thousand. That hundred thousand dollar house is two hundred thousand dollars now. So, it's not exactly the same amount. It's not going to be, if it was six hundred and ninety-four dollars then, yeah, that was for the, for the same house, but that same house is two hundred thousand dollars now. I know, because a lot of my properties have doubled like that, and I did go protest it. Some of them did good, some of them didn't. It's still, they're still going to nail you for, nail is maybe the wrong word, I'm sorry. You're still going to get taxed higher, because I have, and I did go out there, and I protested, protested two or three days in a row, I was out there. And some of it did good, some of it didn't. On the land values here in the city, they went a hundred percent irregardless, the protesting didn't work. It went over a hundred percent. But I have been approached every day.
Thank you. Pete, what about you?
I have talked to approximately twenty people who've come in on our tax rate, and I would say that four of them, who have probably been involved with school districts, or cities, or something, said that the tax rate is too low, they realize it should go up some, they don't want to pay taxes, but they're willing to, because we need to. I'll comment on, you want to know? Okay, there were probably, probably four said that they understood, probably had ten from county residents, who said they didn't want taxes to go up, and there were four from out of the county who called and said they didn't want taxes to go up. But they're not residents here, but they own land here, they own mineral interests. As far as the tax rate, the first Commissioners' training I went to in Austin, I met people from the Permian Basin, West Texas, and said, don't let your tax rate get too low, you better watch it. Warned them. Okay, the first year, it wasn't much said about it, it came down to forty-seven cents. Okay, the next year, well, it was such a period of a rollback election, everyone said, no, no, don't mess with it, it's a rollback election, we can't stand it, it's going to be so much work for the tax office and all that, don't change it. Okay, we didn't do anything. The next year, we were supposed to have meetings, and it didn't get any held, and it got too late to publish the, the notice in the paper, so we didn't have any hearings. So, it's been talked about all the time. But I, I am saying that the people there warned us, don't let your tax rate get too low. And I think it is too low, and I think it needs to grow up. I'll also say this, I'm going to look at the budget and see if there's anything that can be cut, and if we can raise it only six cents, or five and a half cents instead of eleven cents, see if we can cut some out of the budget. If we do that, we may have to take two positions from the sheriff department, we may have to take four million dollars away from road and bridge. I don't know what we can do. But I'm going to look at it, the budget, and see what we might be able to do.
Tracy, the last.
But you see, I'm sorry, we don't want to take away any positions from the sheriff department, because that's endangering our citizens, but like Commissioners over there that we may have to, and a lot of this is to improve roads. And every, I mean, more people from out there, from the rural areas, through the roads, come out in, they're the ones that complain, because they're legit complaints. But if we don't meet this some way, we're not going to be able to improve any of these roads, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to help out the people out there on the roads, because they say they're the ones that get the less benefits, but now we're trying to give them some kind of benefits, but we're, we're hurting everyone, not hurting, but we're, everybody's going to have to pay for these county roads, and I understand that, but.
Just make one observation. I've been coming to this Commissioners' Court meeting for about seven years. I haven't missed a very big, probably four or five in seven years, my wife and I. And some others, other citizens. Every time that there's a cut in the budget, it always went to either the sheriff's department, or it went to road and bridge, and the rest of the county just walked away. Everybody still, that's right, but everybody still got their raises, and, but the first people that got tapped was road and bridge and sheriff's department, every time.
Why is that?
I'm sorry?
But then, why is that?
Well, they don't want to look at the rest of the county.
Right.
I mean, if they're going to cut, I mean, they look at.
They cut the budget to build this building, they cut the budgets to pay for this building.
Which is part of what.
Which we didn't need. Historically, with Gerald, with Gerald Obsee there, that was a lot of times that we had to cut the budget, and those are our biggest budgets, and we didn't, we didn't have this kind of, we didn't have this kind of money. We were, what was our, three million, I think, four million, budget back then?
Road and bridge, about a million.
At the moment, that was between all the Commissioners.
Total budget was, what, maybe about four million?
Yeah, we had maybe, I think I had a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and I was running all of precinct three, and you had about a hundred and eighty-seven, a hundred and ninety. We had about, less than two hundred thousand dollars, we had about eight hundred thousand dollars budget to run that back then. But whenever something was cut, it aimed, we cut ourselves, we aimed at ourselves, and we were road and bridge. You know, I know that now it looks like we're aiming at the unit system, still road and bridge, but we served that back then, when we didn't have any money, we had to cut ourselves back then.
Well, you mean, it cuts the citizens in driving, or it's getting cut? It's not you getting cut, it's your, it's the roads that are getting cut.
You know what I mean, I'm referring to us as a whole.
But the citizens on those kind of roads that travel, were the ones getting cut. They done?
Yes, and I understand, but we still have tried to make, do it, I understand, Mr. Hahn.
Don't you wish that when we were, when I was still there, that we had the money that, that they've got today to work with? What could we have done?
Yeah, we should have been facing the same situation.
The same situation. Same situation.
You were Tracy. I thought the unit system was going to be bad.
Seventy-five percent of the people that call me and talk to me, they want to leave it this way it is, or they don't want to increase. The other twenty-five percent, they want to keep everything growing like it should. I'm a, I'm one of the probably large taxpayers in the county, too. I pay my salary every year, you know, so, I'd like to see it be raised a little, but maybe not as much as thirty cents. I think we could split, split it in the middle, cut, cut some things out of the budget that we really can do without, and make this whole thing work. And I'm not saying cut road and bridge either, because I, I think road and bridge need to stay with what they have, and we need to increase all of these roads, and, and work on some that aren't heavily traveled by the oil field, and maybe let Mr. Woznick get some of those paid, where we don't have to mess with them anymore. And, right away, if we put more attention on the roads and really being traveled, and then if we be able to increase the salaries of some of these people, we can hire some better people that won't be at these convenience stores, riding around all day, they'd be out there doing someone's work. That's a problem. Every time we get cut, we can't hire anybody, because they go to work for the oil field. It's like I'm trying to hire somebody to build some fence for me, offering fourteen dollars an hour, just to run a post though, they could buy, not by hand either, by a tractor. They, they said they kept on going, you know, so, there we are. I'm just telling you the way it is. Last week I was. All we can do. Last week I was in Cora, at the, the, Senator Energy Resource Committee, I mean, the Transportation Committee was there, and one thing they were talking about, and they told Senator Nicholson, is that counties in the Eagle Ford, and I think counties in all the shale places are having problems getting people, especially in rural counties, to get people to come to work, work in the rural county. DeWitt County, Judge Fowler told the Senator that, that they were, they were having to raise their increases in salaries for deputies, because just to try to attract somebody to come to work in, in their county for law enforcement. Everywhere you go, you hear the same thing about, well, we can't compete with the, with the oil industry for the salaries they pay. You can't, you can't blame the oil industry for paying good salaries, because that's their business, I mean, they, they need to have good people to produce. But, one thing here in Cornish County, we've always done is, is like, you always look at the big ticket item, and, and it's always been cut for the big ticket item. Big ticket items has always been road and bridge, or, or the sheriff's office, or, at the time, those two now. But, we always, also, in other, for us to try to create some growth, or trying to update the infrastructure in the county, we always put off building something to another year, to another year, to another year, and then that turns out to cost more, more, and more. And this, to me, again, is, is a building year, where we need to try to do what we can. I think everybody here tonight has made a, a lot of good points, and, again, I, I just, I want Cornish County to be in a position where we can continue to grow, and if something ever would happen, we'd have enough funds to continue to operate.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we can almost all agree that we don't mind paying our taxes, we've paid them in the past, we've been jerked around, and just seen a lot of waste, a lot of things that didn't get done, that should have been done, no matter how much money you had, or how little money you had, it didn't seem to matter. And I think that if you raise the taxes, what's the guarantee that we're going to get any better than we've had in the past?
We never any guarantees that you, you get what you pay for, and you get what you insist on. You, when you go buy a product at the store, what's the guarantee it's going to be good? You ever buy anything, something, and it doesn't turn out to be good? Of course. Happens to everybody. And, poorer production, poorer worker production, that's not limited to county government. I've been up there in the middle of the day, a lot of times, at those same convenience stores Ricky's at, and seen all the guys just loafing around and hanging around, too. So, I think it's a little unfair to single out my department, or anybody's department, and say, well, they're just county employees, lazy and no good, or whatever. I don't think that's accurate. And I don't think that's what Ricky meant, he's just giving me an example of seeing guys that weren't being productive, and that, that shouldn't be tolerated. You're right. You know, the citizens of this county have been asked repeatedly, you know, I'm hearing this still, about, well, the rollback's not a match, we're going to win that. What happened when the bond elections came up, the jail, the courthouse, for all the school districts? How many of y'all voted for any of those things? But a large percentage of the citizens did, and I know some of you probably did, but a large percentage of the citizens voted to do things, as they thought would forward this community, would make it a better place for their kids, make it a better place for themselves. And, I think what I'm hearing is a lack of faith that this will do any good. Eric said, you can't spend that much money on the roads, you can't do it. You cannot effectively spend, I don't know if you've done any research on that, but you said it. I don't think you have done any research on it. I think we can find contractors to get out there and, and hire up and do roads. Now, we're going to have to adequately plant it, we have to get the road and bridge department to plant it, but, you know, without one nickel of extra money from the general fund of the county, road and bridge department has seven something to work with on these projects that are under seventeen forty-seven, that's very limited in scope, as you pointed out. It has the money that'll be derived from the C turds. You know, this, this county was placed under a system where all increased property value taxation basically goes to road and bridge, that's where it goes. There's a bunch of monies going to them, to the road and bridge department from that. And then, there's the road and bridge special tax rate, you know, the, the special tax that's collected, far strictly for road and bridge. That's a fair amount of money, and basically, I think somebody said nine million dollars of the general funds being collected are going to go to the road and bridge and try to really, you know, get some of that some work done. And that is, if you're talking about the cuts, I don't know if you want to cut any deputies out of the sheriff's department, or reduce your law enforcement, I can tell you that the budgets of the county offices are pretty sparse. I don't, I don't think we're paying for too many people or anything else in this budget that we've set up. But if you, you know, you can't save millions of dollars going through there and cutting everybody's wages. You won't save millions, though. You can cut all the positions out, and make them work with the exact same number of people that are going to work. that are going to work that were there today, and it's not going to save you the money that you're talking about to get that tax rate down to a rollback rate. It's going to have to come out of Road and Bridge, and it's going to have to come out of Sheriff's Fund, if it's anyone. And, to really get that rate down. I think that's a bad idea, I've told you why, I'm not going to reargue the points. I have respect to all of your opinions, you know, everybody's here to express themselves and tell why they don't think it's a good idea, and that's fine. We've had some support, too, and I appreciate that. But, as I said, let's talk about this, the budget, let's look at it, scrutinize it, get a copy of it, look at it, and let's discuss line by line, line by line, department by department, what it is you want to cut in order to get the tax rate down to the level you consider acceptable. And then the Commissioners will vote on what budget they want to adopt, and what tax rate they want to down. And, that's how we'll do it, that's what the law requires, that's how we'll do it. You're right to be here, to speak your mind, you're right to ask the right questions, and we'll try to provide, do with some yet additional information at the second hearing. Once again, that's set for next Monday at nine AM. I hope all of you can be there, and maybe some additional people, different people can come as well. Anybody have anything else? I sure appreciate your attendance, thank you very much.
How much revenue does the Department of County get out of the royalty, so the properties that y'all, that the Department's got to go? Do you get any kind of royalty?
We are getting some royalty checks that have not been substantial yet, that I've seen, you know, a couple of three thousand dollars, I've seen checks for like, a couple of three thousand dollars in a given month. Is that about right? I guess we're hoping these wells under Cornish County will drill under here, and some other county properties will derive some more income. One of the things we're trying to dig by the way as well, too, there's an Attorney General's opinion, we're trying to get the legislature to legislate around, or courts rule against, it basically says, our county road right of ways, you know, we've got quite a few acres of county road right of ways that the county has, we have, as we've discussed, we have to maintain those roads, we have to keep them in shape, but we don't get the royalty from under, the state takes it. And since, since two thousand eight, or two thousand nine, somewhere in there, two thousand eleven, I believe, the state's derived like seven and a half million dollars royalty from the roads underneath our county, and we could sure use that to fix the very roads that they're taking the minerals from under. But the state, right now, all that money goes straight to the state, and they get to spend it in San Diego, Austin, Dallas, Florida, so, I can promise you, it's not coming back down here. So, we'd like to get some support from all of you, try to get that turned around. Judge Fowler over and do it, he's working hard to try to get that done, and all of us, I think everybody sitting here realizes, that would be a good thing for this county, to get that done. So, what I hope we can do is, we have to be, we're fellow citizens of Cornish County, we have to be able to come, share opinions which are different from each other's, in a lot of respects, but let's try to work together to try to do what we think's right for Cornish County. And to try to do things that'll help this place get better, help this place secure itself in the future. And I hope all of us can, you know, we're here, we've shared our experiences, we've talked to each other, sometimes we disagree strongly, but I think we can all walk away from here and say, "We're going to, we've got another meeting coming, we're going to try it one more time and talk about it, and then we'll talk about this budget." And see if we can work out a budget that gets the tax rate that enough people will be satisfied with, then we can go forward. Thank you very much.
All right, there's been a motion to adjourn in a second, all in favor? All right, thank you.